Chairman, I simply wanted to observe as we get into the hearing and looking at these resolutions for the districts. We are convening them with our TDD members present and voting on these matters. I'll turn it over to Sharon.
Sharon. Okay. Good morning, RDA Board of Directors. Our audience members with us today and our virtual participants. Welcome back to our second public hearing. I am Sherry Ziller, President and CEO of the RDA. It continues to be my privilege to be here today for the consideration of establishing seven of our transit development bonds districts. So today I'm joined by the RDA planning team, MKSA, Policy Analyst, and APMG. We have a very short presentation for you today. We'll sketch out the impact of the rail projects here in Northwest Indiana. We'll describe how the RDA works with our local communities to draw these draft districts, the boundaries, of each of the TDD Transit Development Districts being heard today with each of our communities' investment goals in mind. So the rail process, just a really good federal update here. The ACTA signed the grant providing the funding to make the Westlake Corner project a reality. The Northwest Indiana commuter transportation district, NICD, they're already working with their design and construction teams to begin the four-plus years to make the Westlake Line operational. And then Double Track also received their grant providing the federal funds beginning of January. So the RDA, we're moving on, we're moving forward on our own separate mission, which is to ensure that the best possible options for development around each of our distribution areas are considered. They're agreed to by the communities and they're eventually funded and put into place. And both rail projects are currently under construction with scheduled completion dates of 2024 and 2025 for Westlake and Double Track, respectively. So next slide, this is just some housekeeping. For the public comment period, I'll just like to go over this to everyone right now. So the RDA Board of Directors will receive public comment on the TDD boundary limited to the following persons wishing to comment. He'll need you to sign up and the sign off sheets are located on that. There's our, there's our set this point. We will give you the opportunity to sign up to write or really say your name and address while approaching the podium. If you would like to make a comment, if you are attending virtually, what we ask you to do, just type your, your name and your address into the chat function. If you wish to make a comment, you'll be called on. You can do it individually. When called on, just please state your name and your address verbally. If you wish to make a comment, just in writing only, just type your name and your address again in the chat function while you're commenting. You can also, I have sent an email to Dave Wellman and this email address is DWellman@rdan.com. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. Only comments related to the TDD boundaries will be in order. Commentary on NICD and the rail planning of TOD developments within each of our communities being heard today will be ruled out. Next slide is the agenda. So we will, I continue doing the introductions, recap on the TDD boundary process, public input received today. And then we'll jump right into the individual TDD boundaries, hearings, and public comment. Slide. So here, what I would say is during the past three years of RDA, we've been meeting with our station area community leaders to better understand their own visions and any facets for TOD. And the RDA, we came together, our planning team, to assist in these efforts again with MKSA, APMG, and Policy Analyst, NICD, and our team. And the hearings today, hearings today, those are the next step in the process of bringing a unique set of development tools that have been afforded to us and into play to help grow the Northwest Indiana economy, further establish higher quality life insurance. So all right, next slide. We're going to jump right into the process of the legislation. I'm going to go over my colleagues, Mr. Aaron Kowalski from MKSA to continue on with the presentation.
Thank you, Sherry, and it's very much appreciated today. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to present to all of you. So I'll go fairly quickly. Happy to answer questions from the board members in public for those who signed up. So recap on the boundary process of legislation. I think many of you from last time were sportless as well, so I'll go quickly. You know, this is enabled by the Transit Development District for TDD legislation. That was approved by the state as part of the House Enrollment Act of 144. And really the intent here that the RDA has been charged with is to catalyze, guide, and promote that kind of development around stations. Both the current South Shore, which is part of Double Track, and the future Westlake Line. So a TDD operates similar to a TDD district. It captures increment, incremental property tax and local income tax revenue to support development within the boundary. So one thing that's important is the increment that's collected in the boundary will be reinvested in the boundary. Boundaries by statute are allowed to be 320 acres of one-half sperm mile area. And that's what we're hearing today. At a point in the future, they are eligible to be expanded to 640 acres of one sperm mile. So a little bit more detailed explanation of transit development districts and how they work, just so recap. You know, it, it, it does function similar to a TDD district. If there is an existing TDD district, the TDD overlays the TDD district and they are able to continue to operate in a way that's beneficial to both that kind of development districts. The, the RDA will be working with the local units once the TDs are established to create MOUs, to regulate how funds and investments will occur. And another thing of note, the TDD expires no later than June 30th of 2047, first date section. So another recap on kind of the boundary process of legislation. We are happy to note that we have a number of, of boundaries eligible for RDA board review. We've per statute gone through the first public hearing back in June. This is the second public hearing as required by statute. So what we will be hearing today are the boundaries for Munster, Dyer, Main Street. That is a boundary that does exist. It will exist in the future in both local units. We have a modification that we received from the town of Dyer. It's now been approved by the Dyer Town Council. When we get to that portion of the presentation, I will note that. It's also important to note that none of the other boundaries changed from last time we all met. So that is really the only change that we received from the first to second hearing. We will also be hearing Munster Ridge Road, Hammond Gateway, and that also encompasses their downtown area. E Chicago, Gary Miller, Portage, Agnew, to get a boundary that's split between two local units and Michigan City. So we've gone through the process that's set forth by statute that, that is allow us to devise these boundaries. And we are ready to present these before the board for consideration today. And then we do anticipate taking this to the State Budget Committee this coming fall. There are other communities and boundaries that's important to note that are eligible for TDs. So we are working with City Gary focused on the downtown area. At some point in the future, it's likely that the board will hear a request for a boundary to be approved for that area. The same is true for June Park, likely the County Board will be interested in a boundary here in the near future and Beverly Shores. And again, as of note, the first hearing, this is a reminder, was held on June 6th, 2022, in this room. So again, this isn't just a boundary. This is, you know, really something that complements back the road path of communities. And really that's the intent of the legislation that's set, set forth by the state legislature. Please continue to stay updated on this process and the parallel TOD process that Sherry noted that is helping the communities get ready for the investments that are anticipated within these transit areas as the rail projects are soon to be open in the next several years for revenue service. So NWITDD.com is, and will continue to give you current house information as further updates are made through this process and through the parallel TOD planning process. So I think at this point, Mr. Hollenback will kind of go through the public comment period, kind of like we did last time. He wants to go through these one by one. So as Sherry went through the public comment period, but just as a reminder, as we go through this series of slides here, we'll go through it community by community. And then at the end, each of them, we will pause and hear the public comment period. So we will start with Hammond Gateway, which also encompasses the downtown area. It's important to note that this boundary is 314.0 total acres. We have worked with the city of Hammond diligently over a significant period of time to devise this boundary. And the idea here is that this encompasses the area around the Gateway Station where they anticipate significant economic development here in the future, as well as connects to their downtown area. Their city officials have spent a great amount of effort trying to reinvigorate and revitalize the downtown area. Of note, there's also, is a desire by the community to have a future train station in the downtown area. So this TDD boundary would encompass both. And through this process, we have identified potential development areas that, based on our analysis, we anticipate seeing substantial economic development here in the future contained within these boundaries. And meetings and milestones, we kind of add to this list since we all met last time. We have confirmed the boundary with the community multiple times. They are supportive of the boundary. We've been working closely with members of staff and elected officials in the community in that regard. And this was subject to RDA Board hearing number one. It's also important to note that there are a number of developments already underway within the TDD boundary that will benefit from the second economic development tool. So I think with that for Hammond, I don't know if there are any folks in the room or online that signed up to make public comment.
Mr. One?
No, no here.
Okay. So the next boundary we'll be hearing is E Chicago. And similar to all the other communities, we've been working very closely with the local units to devise this boundary. This is the boundary that encompasses the train stations, the current E Chicago station, as well as areas along Indianapolis Boulevard and other major corridors that the community anticipates significant economic development to occur in the near future in benefit of transportation oriented development. The TDD total acreage in E Chicago is 298.7 total acres in area. And we have identified a number of sites that the city does believe significant economic development will occur in within this TDD boundary as it is established over the next several years in support of transoriented development. And we met with E Chicago officials, both staff and elected officials over a significant period of time to devise this boundary. This is a boundary that has been confirmed and supported by the local unit. And they were in attendance at the first board hearing. And I would ask, are there any public comments on the E Chicago boundary?
There are none. Mr. One?
There are none. We will move our heads to the Gary Miller boundary. So the Gary Miller boundary encompasses the current Gary Miller NICD station, as well as Lake Street Commercial District and a significant amount of property along the US 20 Mountain Road, as well as up Lake Street connecting to Lake Michigan. We've worked very closely with city officials, as well as elected officials within the city to devise this boundary. And this is encompassing what we believe will generate significant economic development here in the future. The boundary is 315.7 total acres. So it's under the threshold allowed by statute. And we've worked with city officials to identify a number of sites that we believe will generate significant economic development within the community over the coming years. And we've met multiple times with City Gary in this regard. City Gary has offered the support of this boundary and they were in attendance at the first year. I'd ask for public comment.
Chairman?
And there are none on one.
The next boundary we're hearing is the Michigan City Draft TDD Boundary. We've been working very closely with City of Michigan City officials, both elected and staff level officials on the boundary. We've devised a boundary that encompasses what we believe are significant economic development opportunities within the downtown area at a total of 315.1 acres in accordance with state statute. That is under the threshold of 320. And we've been working closely with city officials to understand and devise where economic opportunities may occur in, in the city of the station area itself, as well as in the greater downtown area in support of transportation, transit oriented development. And we've met with Michigan City a number of times during the process. Officials have supported this boundary, continue to support this boundary, and attended the first hearing. And there's a person here of Michigan City at this current hearing as well. And Michigan City is seeing significant economic development interest, as well as rail projects in their downtown area already. So we believe that the TDD boundary is encompassing of significant opportunities to help revitalize downtown Michigan City.
We have one.
Good morning, board. I've been here the original for the first area in their consultant, make sure I know this one. My name is Skylar York and I'm the Director of Plan and Development for the City of Michigan City. Thank you for having me and offering me the opportunity to discuss this. First of all, I'd like to thank the RDA for acceptance of our task, the item to completion. I would also like to thank the consultants who have helped us with the TDD boundary. Input that they've offered us have been very valuable and helped us stay in office district. And I remember when we first started this district, it was a very big amoeba, the only way I can explain it. So this is how this got home with sand and go think about it. The completion of the TDD district, I'm sorry, the completion of the TDD districts from the Northwest Indiana is committed to sustainable transit, future growth, and economic development. Transit districts offer opportunities for our various communities to create unique districts and support goals for each of our cities and towns. Michigan City, we're creating a TDD boundary that will create a true transit oriented development district focused on a new train station in Michigan City. Michigan City used to be above transit. We had a downtown train. We had a regional bus system that connected to that train system. It seems fitting that now we have this opportunity with the TDD and the development happening to kind of reposition Michigan City as a transit center for the, for the region. Michigan City is already experiencing development, demand, and need growth. Other communities such as Port and Port County are experiencing it as well. So I can tell you, we're ready for growth. We've been preparing for ten years for this growth. And it's just another full job that's been into our city. So with that, we're very excited for the TDD. Michigan City's excited. Port's excited. And I know that the place of the next side of it, Kansas excited as well. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Any other?
No, there are not.
The next one for review is Munster, Dyer, Main Street. And as a footnote, this is the boundary that has slight adjustments since we met last time. And I will go back to it. So the Munster, Dyer, Main Street boundary straddles both communities, Munster and County Dyer. And, and so what we've done is worked closely with both of the communities over a period of time to devise these boundaries in a similar fashion to others, but focused on that kind of development opportunities within each of the respective communities. We've worked closely with the town of Munster officials, which a person is in the room today. Thank you for being here to devise this boundary. And we understand that this is encompassing of what the town believes are economic development opportunities within the town in close vicinity to, to this TDD area. The Munster portion of the boundary is 195.3 acres. The second community we've been working closely with is County Dyer. And actually, an official from the town is here as well. We recently had a modification of this boundary to remove a parcel of property that currently is a, an area that they don't think development is going to occur in the near term. And to include some additional property like Cowley Matt Avenue. You can see the blue area in the southeast portion of the map where the town has identified some short-term opportunities for that kind of development that would be in benefit of the TDD and also in support of the kind of development the community wants to see. You know, taking advantage of the fact there is a train station that will be here in close vicinity. So the Dyer adjusted portion of the boundary is 116.4 acres to a total of 311.7 acres. We have identified a number of economic development sites within both communities. They're shown here on that. And we've been working with the local officials to, to, you know, ensure that these, these areas were, were chosen, you know, ideas with the contracts, plans, other entities and plans to put together. So we've met with the communities independently. Those communities have also been working together to understand what each community wants to do from an economic perspective. And throughout this process, you know, we've met many times with the communities. And they were stationed with the first board hearing as well. In support of the County of Munster, the boundary, similar with the County of Dyer. Met with leadership a number of times and have helped to make those adjustments to the boundaries so that we can continue to have support from the local units there as well. So I would ask for a public comment from either County of Munster or County of Dyer.
No.
No.
The next boundary we're hearing is Munster Ridge Road. So this is the second boundary in the Munster area. So what's important to note here is this boundary did not change. So there's no confusion, just the Munster, Dyer, Main Street boundary changed, the Ridge Road boundary did not change. This boundary is 309.3 total acres. So under that, a lot by statute, and encompasses the area along Ridge Road where the NICD station is part of the Westlake will be, as well as development connected down both rail and trail further south where the town has identified that they, they anticipate further economic development. We've identified a number of sites clustered around the station area where we anticipate over the coming years that there will be significant development interest and economic development opportunities. And we've met with the town a number of times during this process. They continue to support this boundary. There's also kind of an immediate development project outside of the vicinity of the station area within the TDD boundary. That's the plans and contract plus property, which we see economic development hopefully here in the near future. So I'd be happy to take comments on the bridge over that.
We have none on one.
Next is Portage, Agnew, to get this is a battery that's split between two communities. And I'll go through kind of the acreage for each. So we've been working closely with City of Portage and County of Agnew to devise this battery. This is an area that has had a current NICD station. There isn't a lot of development in this area today, but it's anticipated that there is an opportunity for substantial development in this area in accordance with planning done by City Portage. So the Portage TDD boundary, portion of the TDD boundary is 292.4 acres. And Agnew encompasses an additional 16.3 acres, totaling 308.7 total acres. And within this area, we have identified a number of sites that have significant economic development opportunity. And City Portage in particular has noted that they have economic development interest in areas. They recently had an RFP for a site on Indiana 249 near and within the TDD boundary. So they are already generating economic interest in this area. They've been working with us through this process. Mayor was in attendance at the last hearing. They continue to be supportive of this battery. And I'd be happy to take public comments from either Portage or Agnew. We've met with Agnew several times through the process as well in support of the battery.
No.
There are none on one.
So I think that concludes the review of all the boundaries and the public comment.
Maybe we should have one last opportunity and add a bit of all the TDDs. Is there anyone else who would like to comment or question the presentation regarding the boundaries of the district?
There are none. I would refer to my governing board members to indicate that we have complied with both the procedural and substantive requirements contained in our enablement statute for the creation of the TDDs. And we've had before you resolutions that would establish each of these. And I would go through each of them and we can see if there's any questions or concerns. Otherwise, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend you're entertaining a motion to approve each of these resolutions. First one before you is Resolution 22-02. And it involves, it involves the creation of the Hammond Gateway TDD. If there are questions or concerns between the staff and I, I think we can address those. Otherwise, we would be in a position to be considering entertaining approving Resolution 22-02, the Hammond Gateway TDD creation resolution.
Mr. Chair, would there be a, or I guess that's a question, would there be a legal impediment to just passing the law at one time?
There's probably not a legal impediment, but I think it is that, I understand what you're saying. I think for purposes of going out state, I would like to see them adopt this individually. So if we are at the state agency, we can indicate that we're adopting so. But thank you for the thought.
All right. So we'll look at Resolution 22-02. Is there a motion to move or approve?
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Next. Some other stuff.
It's a turn in, you got to turn. Resolution 22-03 is the establishment of the East Chicago TDD. Is there a motion to approve?
I saw move and second.
It's been a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Resolution 22-04, establishment of the Gary Miller TDD, with the pleasure of the board. Motion, it's a second. Any randy? Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Resolution 22-05, establishment of Michigan City TDD. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion two, right.
Is there a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying not.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Resolution 22-06, establishment of Munster, Dyer, Main Street TDD. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Motion second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying not.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Resolution 22-07, establishment of Munster Ridge TDD. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying not.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. And Resolution 22-08, establishment of Portage, Agnew.
And Resolution 22-08, establishment of Portage, Agnew, TDD, is there a motion to approve? Motion is a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Now the work will begin.
I'm starting to work on this. It's been quite a journey to here, so thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn, maybe?
So can I ask a question? Chairman, this fellow here, that first chart that had all the chronology on it, with all the dates on it? Could you send that to me? Because that's the one I get asked most about. When are these going to happen? I'll be in the tree this month and I keep forgetting all the dates. If you could send that to me, I appreciate it.
God, don't.
Yes. We will get that, get that to you, Jack. Okay, I think we had a motion to adjourn, is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Thank you.